She's been on job for a few weeks now. To say that she's hit the ground running would be an understatement. The position, as I think the council knows, but it really balances both all of the city's environmental initiatives. As well as a lot of our traditional public works function. So. Emily's background is very strong in environmental stewardship locally in this region. Also touching substantially on alternative transportation and walkable livable cities work. And then also has some background in kind of, you know, grassroots movements as well. So. We're excited to have her staff, I think, have been excited to have her. Jump on board quickly and gain an understanding of the work they were doing. Want to encourage the community to reach out and touch base with her on issues around environmental services and kind of traditional public works. When they feel ready. As well as if the council would like to spend any time with her to let us know, we can set up some time as well. So. Welcome, Emily, if you wanted just to say a couple of words, feel free to.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and council members. I have been honored, you know, to have been selected to join the amazing environmental services team. And really getting up to speed so far on all the essential city services. All the complexities around maintaining parks and open spaces and facilities. And then the really innovative energy, solid waste and. And recreational programming that the city really encompasses. And I felt very welcomed from the ES team and many departments. And I'm really looking forward to working with you, the council and the community at large. Coming up here and really to support furthering many city goals. So thank you very much and look forward to working, working with you soon.
Great, welcome aboard. Okay, well, we also have under ceremonial matters, an introduction of a new employee, our new assistant city engineer. So I'm going to turn it over to Natra for the introduction.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, council members. We recently hired David Case as an assistant engineer for Z Barqueta. David Case is a licensed civil engineer and he has both public and private experience. And he's been in the area for more than 15 years, so he knows the area pretty well. Before joining us, he was assistant city engineer at City Buicka. So we are very excited for him to be here, part of our team, make our team here and. And it's been a week, he has already started working on the projects, so we are very excited he'll be. Improving our infrastructure projects in the city. So David is here, if you want to say a few words.
Yeah, I don't have too much to say other than so far everyone I've met has been very nice, friendly and welcoming. So I'm really excited to be part of the team and looking forward to working with everyone.
Welcome. Well, thank you. Next, under ceremonial matters, we do have a proclamation in honor of kinetic sculpture racing on May 29th, 2021. Whereas the art and sport of kinetic sculpture racing, difficult to truly comprehend, but easy to enjoy, is a Humboldt tradition originating in Ferndale and spreading like wildfire to other parts of planet Earth. And whereas the kinetic tradition has been a part of Humboldt County life since 1969, with at least one kinetic race starting on the Arcata Plaza for the last 50 years. And whereas the kinetic grand championship is a tribute to the rich history of kinetic racing in Humboldt County. Kinetic Universe, the kinetic grand championships nonprofit organizing body, works to promote the tradition and values of kinetic sculpture racing in Humboldt County. And whereas kinetic sculpture racing encourages the recycling of junk and tidying up of our environment, while exploring sustainable transportation as a creative solution to greenhouse gas emitting vehicles, thus fighting global climate change. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby congratulates Kinetic Universe on its glorious and dedicated stewardship of the uniquely Humboldtian tradition of kinetic sculpture racing. The council encourages everyone to witness the 2021 kinetic sculpture in place on Saturday, May 29th, 2021, at kineticgrandchampionship.com for the glory. Signed today by the mayor. So May 29th, folks. Okay. And then let's see. Next, we have early oral communications. And this 15 minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters not on tonight's agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes and we can take up to seven speakers. Please raise your hand if you are on Zoom or press star nine if you are calling in by phone and wish to make a comment. And do we have any members of the public that would like to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda?
We do, Mayor. Screen name raw war paint at yahoo dot com. Can you please go ahead?
Hi, um, yeah. I wanted to speak on behalf of the old Arcata Road project by Jacoby Creek, the roundabout.
Yeah, we have that on the agenda.
Okay, so I should wait?
Evening. Yeah, so if you're speaking about that, that will be under old, old business. Or sorry.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm checking one more time if there is anybody that wishes to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Yes, we do have one. Please go ahead, Maggie. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. I have just a short announcement. Zero Waste Humboldt has joined a growing number of zero waste organizations around the country for a campaign that is to help businesses each in our own local communities that is reopen with reuse. And I just simply wanted to make that announcement. We'll have information for businesses. We'll be able to coach them, help them, and I know this is one of the goals of the city, to help businesses reopen and to get back on track with reuse and reducing plastics in particular. That's my announcement.
Thank you. Checking one more time for any public comment on an item not on tonight's agenda. No more public comment, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And next we have our consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So let's see, we have item A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of May 5th, 2021. B, biweekly reports on general warrants. C, adopt resolution number 201-55, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata, authorizing an operating capital loan to Arcata House Partnership. D, approve a professional services agreement with with SHN for assistance with the Arcata wastewater treatment facility upgrade project, coastal development permit and the amount of $50,000 and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. And lastly, item E, approve a proclamation in recognition of mental health matters month, May 2021. And are there any council members that would like to remove an item? I will pull item E from the consent calendar so it can be read aloud. But are there any members of the public or staff that request an item be removed?
Seeing then.
Okay, well, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the consent calendar with the exception of item E.
A second. Okay, you have a motion in a second. Let me call by roll. Roll call, excuse me, Councilmember Atkins Salazar. Councilmember Goldstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So motion passes. And then let me just pull up this proclamation. Excuse me a moment. Sorry, there we go. Okay. So a proclamation in recognition of mental health matters month, May 2021. Whereas May is Mental Health Matters Month and greater public awareness about mental health changes attitudes, promotes wellness, and reduces stigma and discrimination. And whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and wellbeing. And whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation and all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health, especially during a pandemic. And whereas we recognize Humboldt County's ongoing challenges with providing behavioral health services in a remote and rural area, as well as the prevalence of adverse childhood experiences that disproportionately affect our county. And whereas we commend the Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services and all the community partner organizations and individuals, including private, faith-based and governmental, for their outstanding work improving the quality of life and their support for community members with mental illness and substance use challenges in their recovery. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby proclaims May 2021 as Mental Health Matters Month and calls upon the residents, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Arcata to commit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health. The steps our residents can take to promote their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Signed today by myself. And we'll make sure a copy gets to the proponent of this proclamation. So thank you. Okay, next, we don't have any old business, so we will move on to new business. Item A, consider the old Arcata Road rehabilitation and pedestrian bikeways improvement project. May, we have a staff report from city engineer Natra Katri.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and the council members. Before I start my staff report, maybe I'll just give the stage to David on some of the matter and then I'll take it over right after that. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Katri. We did just want to put out the call for ex parte disclosures before we started our staff report. We're aware that some, some council members were approached by members of the public and so. Before we present material for the staff report, it's an opportunity for the council to talk about the, you know, substantive information that they gathered in those conversations and bring that into the public hearing process. So we wanted to allow time for that before we got started.
Okay, I'll just do it by roll call. And if you don't have any, you can just say you don't have any. Let's see, Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, so just, I guess, to share kind of some of the things I heard. What I, what I really took away is kind of the main concerns from a group of citizens that I met with over out by, you know, the, the site where the proposed project and the proposed roundabout would be, would be the impact to kind of the historical resources of the neighborhood and possible historic slash economic impacts, both to the Bayside Community Hall and to the possible removal of parking from that historic space. You know, that would make it less accessible to the public visiting this area. And, and a main concern definitely that I heard the most probably from, from folks was the, the removal of parking. You know, for, for the Bayside Community Hall and those parking spots that are upright against Misswood School there. However, I mean, the, these have been, you know, it's in the, the public record comment as well. There's been, you know, many letters about these things. And then also concerns about lighting that a few citizens, especially ones that are living right directly in that area where the proposed roundabout is, just to, you know, improve the lighting, street lighting and for, you know, future crosswalks and everything like that, to make those improvements. You know, to continue the idea, the, you know, hope of making it safer for pedestrians, bicyclists, cars and all the like. So. I think those were kind of the main three things that I, that I heard in conversations. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Goldstein?
Yeah, I, I heard pretty much the same things. I think the, the goals that I heard expressed were to find a balance between the goals of the current project, which are to prove safety and also preserve the historic nature of that neighborhood. I would say definitely I agree with Councilmember Schaefer that the biggest concern I heard was around parking. The loss of parking spaces on both sides of the road. Seems pretty distressing to the people that I talked to in the community. Because there, it does sound like there are already existing issues with overflow parking during events and things that losing parking spaces would be pretty difficult. And then, yeah, from, there, there were people who lived directly right in on the, the side of the road where there's already an existing street light. And they were just, they really want more safety. It sounds like they have a lot of issues with traffic safety in front of their property. So things like lighting and, and yeah, I mean, the goals of this project to, to really slow down traffic a bit. So, yeah, I would, I would say historic preservation and parking were probably the biggest oppositions that I heard.
Thank you. And then Councilmember Atkins Salazar, any ex parte?
Yes, I was in the same meeting that Sarah was in or the same presentation. And that, what struck me the most was definitely the, the, the fear of some loss of historical sites and and then also parking. So those were both two of the biggest concerns expressed by the, some of the people that were at that meeting. There, there has been also, I've received a lot of phone calls and emails, as I'm sure many of you guys have as well. But there are definitely people in the community that are wanting this to move forward and are really wanting safety measures. So is definitely a lot of opinions on both sides of this issue.
Okay, thank you. And then I did not have any ex parte communications. Any communication I've received has been by email, like other council members have received, but I have not had a separate conversation. Okay, uh, let's see. So why don't we go forward with the staff report now?
Okay, thank you again. Thank you, David. So I will share my screen. So give me a moment here. And let me know when you're able to see my screen. Yes. Okay, so what our goal here today is to give you a project overview. I know some of you and some of the staff and other public member have seen this presentation for maybe at least five times, but there might be some repetitive information, but I will try to just give you a snapshot of the project, how it started and how we end up here today, just from project timeline perspective. So with that, what I plan to do is we will just give you a brief project history overview, current status of the project, where we stand today. And as we heard in last few months or maybe more than a few, few months, parking has been issued at the intersection of Jacoby Creek and Old Arcata Road. So we did some analysis and we will be presenting that as well. And right after that, I will hand the stage back to David Loyah, who will be going over the environmental document and the sequel process and the next steps for the project. So with that. So, as you know, we've been the project encompasses approximately one mile of pavement and just south of Buttermilk to the intersection of Jacoby Creek and Old Arcata Road. In the project area, there are three schools. One is Sunny Brimble School, one is Jacoby Creek School, and there is a Mistwood Motor City School in the area. As you know, road is in very bad condition. We, we have received complaints in last 10 years, I would say. The original project started in mid 2000 and we had construction plans prepared and we went out, we went for, tried to go for construction. However, the neighborhood did not like the proposed plan, so we had to cut the project. After that, there was a big gap and in 2014, 15, at our TSC meetings, we received multiple comments, feedback from the neighbors that, you know, we need to do something about the project. There's speeding issues. We need to have safety for childrens in the area. So based on those comments, we budgeted approximately $50,000 from street funds. And we proposed to do a planning slash design slash public outreach for the project. And budget was approved and then we through, we went through an RFP process and we hired RCA and SHN to help us with our public outreach and planning process. The goal of the planning process and we called it a design shared process was to provide multiple ways to share ideas from public, get some feedback, create a community driven plan for the old Arcata Road project and prepare the conceptual level design for future funding. Having conceptual drawings helps us to get the grants. So the goal was to have at least 30% design or a concept level drawings and do a project study report in place or reporting be done, you know, in time so that we can apply for grants. In the past and in recently, city has been very successful getting the grants in the, when we do initial public outreach and planning process. But that was the same goal for that project as well. We conducted a lot of outreach for the project via flyers, you know, PSA's, social media, website, school newsletters, emails, workshop and through CMS, sustainable message signs along the old Arcata Road to engage people in the process. We had total of three workshops. One pop-up demonstration at, in front of the school and one at the intersection of Jacoby Creek and Old Arcata Road. We had online survey. We could receive information through our city website. There was a project specific website and we got information there from people. Overall, in the process of all workshop and pop-up demonstration, we received, at least we would say there were more than 285 participants in the process. We had our first meeting at the Bayside Grange, or now it's called the Hall, where we had more than 90 attendance. The goal of that meeting was to seek initial input from the neighbor, school, TSC and all the members of the public. We had a small group in the process where each group, our public members group, where we had a design volunteer dedicated to the group and who was helping them to guide through the process and get the feedback. And there were some disagreements in the process, but however, one common theme was, you know, we need to have safety improvements on Old Arcata Road and we need some sort of a sidewalk for the childrens could walk safely. So that was a common theme in that process. Second we did was a walk audit. The walk audit, when we did that, we had at least 40 participants. That included city staff, our consultants, members from TSC, school staff and a member of the public. I'll just fast through that. So the goal of the walk audit was to identify the problems along the old Arcata Road. We walked from school, we observed what happens in front of the school during drop off or pickup time. So this meeting occurred at the pickup time in the afternoon, so we all noticed how the traffic was behaving during the pickup time. So based on that, we had some recommendation in the project. And also during the walk audit, it was identified that there is a lack of sidewalk on the Highland Street where kids were walking on the street because there's no sidewalk on the one side of the Highland Street. Third was, we did a pop-up demonstration, as I said, was one was in front of the Jacoby Creek School just to see how in future, if there's a separate pathway or sidewalk, how it will look. And we did receive positive feedback on that. And then the other one was, we simulated, not around about, but we narrowed the lanes at the intersection of Jacoby Creek and Old Arcata Road. We also received positive feedback on that as well. So after having a walk audit, initial meeting and some pop-up demonstration, we worked with our design team and we drafted some of the concept level designs and we tried to seek feedback from public. So at the meeting, we had our design team explaining each, not each, but most of the public member, the design, if they had any questions on the design and we explained and we asked them to give feedback or put a postmark with the notes, what they like, what they dislike on the proposed projects. Or the, or the proposed alternatives. We did receive a lot of positive feedback on the project and there, there was some constructive negative feedback and also a lot of positive feedback. So the key feedback that we received was maintain the rural character of the Bayside area along the old Arcata Road, improve the safety and people didn't like the separate pathway which already exists and just north of the Jacoby Creek School along the old Arcata Road. Designed improvements from public was, you know, traffic calming is important. We need pedestrian walkways. There needs to be a clear central line or double central line, safer crosswalks. There is safety crossing at the, in front of the school, signage improvements and improving the intersection of Jacoby Creek intersection. All improvements should be bike friendly. There were some individual or participants who wanted to leave the roadway the way it is with no improvements. So based on all the feedbacks, we, as a design team, we work with the design team and we prepared four different alternatives for the project. Overall, this, as the, it's a one month stretch of the project, most of the improvements are same with two travel lanes and a bike lanes on either side. And some type of a walkway, it could be a sidewalk or a separate pathway was a common. But the key, the key areas were on the area in front of the Jacoby Creek and the school. And then the other one was the intersection of Jacoby Creek Road and then Old Arcata Road. So we just focus on that. Most of the improvements in other areas remain same, but the only difference was the alternative one, one was having a separate path in front of the Jacoby Creek and raised islands and then narrowing the roadway in that area. So that was already one. Alternative two was same with a separate path, but instead of a raised island, there would be a roundabout at the intersection of Jacoby Creek and Old Arcata Road. And similarly, alternative three was having a curved sidewalk in front of a Jacoby Creek school without a buffer and having a raised islands and narrow roadways at the intersection of Old, Old Arcata Road and Jacoby Creek. And the fourth alternative was curb sidewalk with a roundabout at the intersection of Jacoby Creek and, and Old Arcata Road intersection. So, you know, in, in concept, you know, I would not go in detail. I just described how the alternatives are. This is how the ordinary one will look. The area in front of the Jacoby Creek, there will be a separate walkway buffer, some type of a bio swell, bike lane on either side and two travel lanes. And intersection of, in concept, the intersection of Jacoby Creek and Old Arcata would be narrowed with the sidewalk, adding some concrete, walkways and improving the walking area in front of the post office as well. Total approximate cost, and this is the cost based of 2018. We have not redone the cost. I'm sure it will be a bit more, but it was a conservative estimate, so it may not change significantly. So it was approximately, cost was $4 million for the improvements for alternative one. Alternative two, as I said, it was a separate path with a bio swell and two travel lanes and bike lanes on either side and a roundabout at the intersection of Old Arcata Road and Jacoby Creek intersection with walkway improvements in front of the post office. Again, this was in the concept level at that level when we did this four years ago or three and a half years ago. The cost of that improvement would be approximately, again, 3.9 million dollars. Alternative three, so this is a bit different than only one and two. It has a curb sidewalk without a buffer or without a bio swell, but it has two travel lanes and bike lanes on either side in front of the school. And then improvements is similar at the intersection of Old Arcata and Jacoby Creek with a sidewalk and a narrow travel lane and improvement in front of the post office. And then the cost of that improvement would be approximately 4.1 million dollars as well. And alternative four differs with alternative three with respect to the roundabout at the intersection of Old Arcata Road and Jacoby And alternative four differs with alternative three with respect to the roundabout at the intersection of Old Arcata Road and Jacoby Creek. And it will have improvements in front of the post office for walking. And then there will, you can see in front of the school, there will be no bio swell in front of the school. There will be just a sidewalk with two travel lane. However, this has been modified since then and there is a turn pocket here at the entrance of the Jacoby Creek School. And we have not drafted that, but that has been done, you know, also in the concept level. And the cost of the improvements for this alternative was four point one million dollar. So you can see, you know, there was not a lot of positive in those alternatives. So I'll just go back to the summary of the key dates. And I went through on the, just a snapshot of the design shared process and public outreach meetings that we conducted in early two thousand sixteen. We did do a presentation at the TSC and at the city council, right? When we were at the ninety percent level for the, in the design shared process and we received a positive feedback from TSC and the city council. And then the, the planning process was finalized at the early January two thousand seventeen and the report was completed. So we had a project study report complete and the concept design is done. So we wanted to move forward with applying for grants for the project. But for applying for the grants for the project, we had to select an alternative to move forward to take that level to next thirty percent design. Or engineering drawing level. So we went to the council in December of two thousand seventeen and presented the same slide. Same process and all the alternatives. And based on staff recommendation, TSC recommendation. Alternative four was selected and we moved forward with alternative four, which was a separate sidewalk. In front of the Jacoby Creek School and a roundabout at the intersection of Jacoby Creek and the old Arcata Road. So once we got direction to move forward with alternative four, we went to an RFP process and hired consulting team. GHD to help us with the final design or thirty percent level design and environmental document for the project. So currently they are on contract with us and they are helping us with design and environmental documents. I have some section that I can go quickly. So once we had the GHD team. They prepared thirty percent level design drawing and gave it to us right in ten months of, after the contract was executed. We did our survey, the ride away survey in house. We have a licensed surveyor, so he conducted that and we used that as a basis. All the improvements for the project will be done within the city ride away or the county ride away. There's a small portion of the project is in the county ride away at the intersection of Jacoby Creek and Old Arcata Road. So I'll just quickly show you the alignment of the project based on the engineering drawings. So this is the alignment of the project just south of Buttermilk Lane along the old Arcata Road. And this is the intersection of Old Arcata and Jacoby Creek. So the section right just south of Buttermilk will look something like this. It will have two travel lanes and it could be a bio swell buffer or a striped buffer of five foot. And then the two five, five foot bike lanes on either side. Section right in front of, at the intersection of Anwick Road and Old Arcata Road will look like something like this. With a five foot bike lane, two travel lane, again, five foot bike lane. And there is existing buffer which varies from four to ten feet. And then there will be a reconstructed new six foot walkway. The section just in the area of Bethany of Golf Course Road and Old Arcata Road will look like something like this. With bike lanes on either side, ten foot travel lane, bio swell and a walkway, but it could be a sidewalk. Similarly. Just north of that, the section will look like this, which is almost similar. The only difference here is there is an existing sidewalk on the east side. And there's, there'll be a new sidewalk on the west side of the old Arcata Road. And again, all the work will be done within the existing city right away. Just also, as I mentioned earlier, and during the walk audit, it was identified that there's a need for a sidewalk. So the section of the Highland Street will look like we have a fifty foot ride away there. There will be a two travel lanes, parking on either side. And there will be a new sidewalk just on the north side of the Highland. The section at the Jacoby Creek Road will look like something like this. There are two travel lane currently. And there's a parking on the, I would say, south side and there is an existing ditch on the north side. So that ditch will be covered. We will be putting in strong drain pipe and it will be covered. And there'll be an added new paved area for proper parking along the street. And this is just in concept. If we do a roundabout, how that will look like, this is just in concept, which was prepared in two thousand nineteen for the project. So in last, I would say, you know, three to four years, we have made a lot of progress. After hiring GHD on our team. We have done multiple reports that needed for the project to complete the environmental document. Most recently, we prepared archaeological and historic property survey report and presented to the Caltrans, which was almost like last week. And they are reviewing that currently and we'll see what kind of response we get. We have thirty percent design done and we cannot move forward until our environmental document is completed. And on the environmental document, David Kip will provide some detail on that. So overall, currently in a way we stand, you know, the total project cost is approximately four point one million dollars. We do have, have secured state funding for portion of it. And then through federal high being infrastructure program that those fundings are secure, secure for construction. We do have some timeline, but we do have to start the construction or finish the design by mid twenty twenty two. To make this happen. And if that happens, we will be able to do the construction late summer of twenty twenty two. And that's still our goal. And before I go forward, or I let Dave speak about the environmental document, I'll just give you a quick overview of the parking. I'll stop sharing my screen here and let me open a new document. Re-share my screen here again. So I'm hoping you're all able to see my screen.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, thank you. So what you see in front of you is, if you're able to see my mouse. This is old Arcata Road here and this is Jacoby Creek Road. This is the post office here. And this is Misswood here and the hall is right here. So before I now explain, you see those red lines are existing parking pattern, I would say. I know some people might disagree with that, you know, people park randomly, but for our analysis, we had made some assumption that minimum parking. Area width has to be minimum eight and a half or nine feet and the depth of at least eighteen feet. So and then there needs to be a room for people to back, which is normally twenty four feet. And so we use that as a basis for our analysis. So based on that analysis, we put all the parking spots. In the vicinity of the intersection. And currently, we believe there are seventy nine parking space, which includes the parking for the hall, parking for the post office. Parking in front of our lift station and along the Jacoby Creek Road. As you will see now, we have not included the parking on the north side of Jacoby Creek in front of the hall. Because there is an existing ditch and we're not supposed to park and there's not enough width to do a parking. So we did not analyze that or we did not include those numbers there. So that's an existing condition. Next. So this, if we, you know, end up with a roundabout and we do the similar, so here the assumption is cities area where the lift station is. We will reconfigure to have some additional parking there and we assume that Misswood, they have some open space in their property. They will be able to use some of their area for parking. So if we include that and nothing else changes, the total parking would be. Seventy one, which is eight stalls less than the existing condition. And again, we have not included any counting along the north side of the Jacoby Creek Road. Flight improvement on this one. So what we did is, as I mentioned earlier, we are proposing to install a strong drain pipe. Where there's a ditch along the Jacoby Creek Road. So that will be covered with, and then there'll be added six foot of paved shoulder. So then people will be able to park that. So if we do that, the total parking will be eighty two. Which is three more than existing one. And I agree like some of the designers may not, you know. Conquer with our assessment of here. Now we are not using this area for parking because there's not enough width for parking. But that's our, this initial analysis. So with that, I'll stop my sharing my screen. I will hand my, this stage to David, just to talk about the environmental document slash sequel process. And then after that, we will take some questions. Thank you.
Thanks Director Katry. I'll, I'll keep this brief. We did originally intend to bring forward. The coastal development permit that the city council would approve, as well as the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring program. For your approval tonight. And so there's information in this written staff report about the coastal development permit. I'm not going to go into any of that detail, but if you have questions, we can, we can come back to it. And the reason I'm not going to go into the details because we can't take action on it tonight, we'll be coming back later to take action on it. And so we'll get into those details then. The one thing I will say, just so you understand the process, as Nature had pointed out, this project has area that's both in the city's jurisdiction. But some area that's in the county jurisdiction. And so the city will be taking on the lead for, for SEQA. It'll be the lead agency and it'll be taking action on its coastal development permit first. After that, we'll be getting a coastal development permit from the county because we have some area within their, their jurisdiction as well. And they will rely on our, our SEQA document to process their, their permit. And so that's just point to note. And so tonight, we, we do have before you the, you know, the action, the conditions of approval. And et cetera in your packet attachment A, we're not asking you to take action on those. Essentially, what happened was, as we were preparing the staff report for this project, a fair argument was, was submitted. For SEQA, what a fair argument essentially boils down to is that, you know, an expert presented information. That it is contradictory to the information that we have in our initial studies. And so the city needs to evaluate that fair argument in, in environmental impact report. And so as we indicated in the SEQA section, we cited the SEQA guidelines sections that are relevant to this. But we had to, you know, take a step back and can't adopt a mitigated neck deck at this point. We have to move forward with an EIR. On, I believe it was Monday, we formally filed the notice of preparation. It's the first step in preparing an EIR is that you let state agencies and other agencies know, we're preparing an EIR. Do you have any comments that you want to add into this early scoping to ensure that we've got the, the project fleshed out? That will be evaluating in this EIR. Now, we have the benefit of having a very robust initial study. That, you know, clearly describes, you know, the project, the, you know, preferred alternative or the proposed project in great detail. That was indicated by, you know, prior councils. As we get into the environmental impact report, we'll need to develop some alternatives. Nature has indicated that we already have some scoping for alternatives. But we'll come back to the community and to agencies to make sure that we've developed an adequate range of alternatives. To address in that EIR. But that's what this first thirty day period is used for, is to try and get, get input from agencies. As part of our notice of prep, we actually put a link to the environment, the initial study. And we also gave the agencies that commented on that initial study, the comments that they had made on it so that they'd have, you know, that fresh in their memory when they're. Responding if they choose to in this, this first thirty day period. During this time, we'll be working on developing the draft EIR. I don't have a timeframe yet for when we'll have that draft ready, but when we do, there's going to be a forty five day period for public circulation. That'll be a timeframe for the public to provide comments. And largely like we did with this initial study where we've taken in the public comment that we received. And then formally responded to it in terms of how it relates to the environmental impacts that we've assessed. We'll, we'll have an opportunity for people to provide that public comment. We'll take that public comment, formally respond to it. Develop a final environmental impact report. And those two documents together, the draft and the final constitute the body of. Sequel work that you'll be basing your decision on. It's not like the final replaces the draft, it just adds to the draft. And so sometime, say in the next, you know, four to six months is what we're hoping. As a, you know, fairly quick turnaround timescale, considering that we've already got this really good head start on the initial study. We'll be able to come back to the council for, you know, for further hearings on that environmental document and on the coastal development permit. And so, you know, the one thing I'll put out, I know, you know, there was some discussion about, you know, among staff. About whether to continue this hearing to a date certain. And that's actually the recommendation in the, in the staff report. And so, you know, council should consider whether or not you want to continue this hearing to a date certain so we can have, you know, more discussion with the community. You know, maybe a town hall style so that the council members can hear directly from folks, you know, now what their concerns are. Or alternatively, you know, as we develop this draft environmental impact report, we can schedule a hearing at that time, which we normally would. You know, to provide the public input on the draft environmental impact report. So I guess, you know, backing up a little bit to the recommendation, you know, either continue as recommended. Or not, if you choose not to, we'll schedule a separate hearing to do some of that, that more town hall style scoping. The council can attend the community's concerns to. The last thing I'll say, you know, this, this project is a little complex, more complicated than, than some in terms of the environmental analysis. Because of the Caltrans funding, they're actually doing National Environmental Policy Act review. So the NEPA review, they're doing cross cutting. And so we're providing them similar information. They're actually taking the lead on that environmental analysis. You won't need to take any action on that, any formal action. But we'll continue to keep you apprised. SEQA and NEPA, there's a lot of overlap, but there's also certain laws that, that regulate these reviews differently. And so we'll be focused squarely on SEQA in our review. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or if you have, you know, project questions, I'm sure Director Katry would be happy to answer those questions as well.
Okay, well, thank you both. Let me just do my roll call, see if there's any questions from the council. We'll start with Councilmember Schaefer.
Great. No, that was just a lot of information, but thank you so much to both Nature and David, just for everything. I mean, you know, you guys have done a lot of work on this. And so I guess my first question that I have. Because, I don't know, just looking at these different alternatives and, and knowing that the past council had approved the alternative with the roundabout, with the sidewalk. And then that, you know, has kind of been the, the plan that had, had gone forward. But has there been, I guess, any, I don't know, study, I guess, into, because I, you know, heard a lot of comment. About, you know, that T intersection instead and that kind of probably more similar to alternative three. But kind of just in my head, thinking about how to fuse the traffic calming of a roundabout with the, you know, kind of intersection. And in T intersection of alternative three. So I guess my main question is especially going northbound on Old Arcata Road coming into Bayside. What other traffic calming measures could be taken? And has there been, I guess, any look into possibly, you know, putting speed humps? Like they have over on the other end of Bayside or, you know, even a stop sign, though that does seem kind of abrupt. So I'm just, my general question is kind of, I mean, what other traffic calming measures could be taken and have we looked into that?
Nature, do you wanna?
No, yes, I was just waiting. Is there more questions from the council members or should I just do one on one? I could do either way. I was just not sure how we want to do that. So I can respond to Sarah's few of the questions.
Yeah, why don't, why don't you go ahead and answer, just in case you say something that maybe would answer a potential question other colleague had.
Okay, so we have looked into other measures, definitely. Okay, um, so, so we have looked into other measures, definitely. Uh, I would say, as you know, Old Arcata Road is a arterial road and already route to one-on-one. So putting a stop sign is not ideal on a major street like that. Um, putting a speed hump also is not ideal because that, in that range, it's just south of um, Jacoby Creek Road. The speed limit is higher, so uh, we don't recommend a speed humps even on the local streets. Uh, we don't recommend when their speeds are high, especially on the major streets like this. Um, other alternatives could be, you know, that was presented, an alternative three was to narrowing down. And I believe we have to let, physical better, let people know that lane is narrow coming ahead. So in narrowing the land, I would say the term is choking in the road in a fashion with landscape or curve or sidewalk so that uh, you don't see a wide road. You see a narrow lanes coming, so you automatically slow down. And that works for, I would say eighty-five to ninety-first, ninety-five percent of the people, uh, definitely, but not for remainder five percent. So we always will have those five percent who will not obey those laws. Um, so I did answer your speed hump, uh, sign, and then the other measures. Did I miss any of your question?
Uh, I think that's good. And, oh yeah, go ahead, David.
I was just gonna add that um, with the EIR, we are required to actually evaluate um, feasible alternatives to the proposed project. And so the, the T intersection with, you know, additional um, uh, you know, road diet, uh, if you will, will be s- one of the alternatives that we, that we evaluate in that EIR.
Great, um, okay. Uh, and then I guess I have one other question just about, and maybe this is more of a comment than a question, but just overall safety of roundabouts for cyclists. Um, and possibly, you know, what could be done to, to mitigate that? Or what that might look like, I mean, to improve safety? Because I know, you know, this whole project is about improving safety for pedestrians and cyclists and also slowing traffic speeds. However, you know, a roundabout does some of those things, but it also actually, you know, kind of, you know, negatively impacts cyclists some of the time. Um, and so I, I don't know if that's more of a question or comment, but um, I guess just, you know, what study has been done? In, you know, with, with this project of what that would look like for, for cyclists with this roundabout?
I would say there's no, not a detailed study has been done just by specific to that, but I'll just give you examples that, our existing roundabout at the Foster Avenue and the Sunset. Uh, at the legs of those um, roundabout, there is a bicycle lane, a bicycle ramp. So the person who does not feel comfortable going through the roundabout, they have an option going ramping up. I know, I know some people don't like bicycles on the sidewalk, but the sidewalks or the concrete walkway would be wide enough. So now less experienced bicyclist, he or she could use that ramp and go on the, on concrete and cross safely without going inside the roundabout. Um, but I have also heard other bicyclists who want to be part of the traffic and they are comfortable going through the roundabout. So uh, there is an option for that. And, you know, in the final design, that will be definitely accounted for, for bicycle safety.
Yeah, because I guess, and this, you know, just what comes to my mind is that, especially with kids who are biking, you know, in that neighborhood with two schools being there, who might not be experienced cyclists and might not know how to navigate, um, you know, around about to have some sort of, you know, signage that could say bicycles can go that, this way, but they can also, you know, go this way and, and, you know, be in that kind of separated sidewalk or separated lane away from traffic if that's, you know, what, what they feel comfortable with. So, great.
Yes, so there will be, uh, we can consider, might not consider, but we can make that a part of the project, having a bicycle lane if we end up doing a roundabout. And also at the, every single leg of the roundabout, there will be a push-button crossing. So the kids or anybody could stop the traffic and they can cross the roundabout safely.
Great. Um, cool, uh, no other questions right now, thank you guys.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Goldstein, any questions?
Uh, yeah, thanks so much for all that information. It was a lot of, I'm still processing a little bit, but um, that was a lot of really great information. I really appreciate you both taking the time. Um, one question that was asked to me when I met with the group of folks um, that live over there by where the roundabout is proposed, um, because there was this conversation about um, maintaining historical integrity, they, there was a question about, did somebody locally who understands um, like rural history, um, do a, like a historical impact analysis or something of that nature? Um, I think one of them mentioned um, to me that the person who had done some of the analysis was from, I think, San Francisco maybe, um, but maybe just not as familiar with our type of history. I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit more to that.
I'd like to suggest that, I mean, we do, we do have the historic report and the staff report um, is attached to the um, the environmental document. And I, I think because the nature of the um, uh, the fair argument that was raised deals specifically with this issue. Um, you know, I, I want to make sure that we have good consultation with our historic uh, resources specialists. Um, and don't, you know, just shoot from the hip uh, with a, a response that, you know, gets uh, basically embedded into our administrative records. So I request a little time to respond to that. And, and that's one good reason for, you know, potentially deferring uh, any kind of town hall to a point when we have our draft admit, you know, our draft environmental impact report ready so that we can share what, you know, some of the responses to this fair argument are.
Yeah, no problem, thank you. Um, that's, that's really fine. Um, I, yeah, I just wanted to follow up with it since it was something that was raised to me and I didn't really have good answers for it, so I thought I would pass the question along. Um, my only other question is just kind of going back to the parking issue. Um, I know that there's also been talk of like a slightly smaller roundabout or going with um, alternative three with the, the T intersection. Um, would that actually be a significant, um, significantly less of an impact on the parking situation? Or would it not make much of a difference?
Um, um, the smaller roundabout will have a smaller impact on parking, but not significant to make the big difference, I would say. I haven't done the numbers of parking and uh, we can do that. But I would say a current um, diameter of the proposed roundabout or the project roundabout is hundred and ten or hundred and thirteen. And then the reduced uh, would be around ninety-six. So that's not a big difference to add additional parking. So it will have very small significant impact, I would say, on parking.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, I don't have any other questions right now, thanks.
Okay, and Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Um, yes, most of the people who reached out to me were concerned with safety and there's concern that the project might get delayed again. So I guess my question is, do you believe that even though we're adding in the EIR, um, that we can still keep the project on track?
Um, based on the information we have right now, uh, we understand, as David mentioned, that we have a pretty robust documents prepared and our EIR document could be completed in four to six months. As long as we are able to do that, uh, we will not be losing the funding for the project. Uh, we did requested extension last year because of the environmental documents. So we did get extension on, on some of the funding. So that's still available, but there is a timeline that we need to finish our environmental document um, by the end of this year to go for the next phase of the project.
Thank you. Uh, and actually, the question I had was similar to yours, uh, Councilmember Atkins Salazar, just about timeline and funding and what would be the impacts um, going, going through uh, this, this process, this necessary process, but just wanting to have a sense of like, how tight is the timeline um, for, for funding? So I, it's good to know that we've gotten an extension. Um, I think at this point, let's open it up to public comment. Um, so typically, uh, you know, uh, I think for my, my new colleagues, I know we've been doing, you know, two minutes for, for public comment. Um, but for those that have been, you know, following, you know, over several years, there are times where we uh, grant uh, extra time uh, on, on certain, you know, um, challenging issues. Uh, so I, I did want to uh, increase it to three minutes uh, for public comment on this item. Um, so uh, let's see, do we have any members of the public wanting to comment on this item? Folks will have three minutes uh, for their comments.
We do have some public comment. Um, I believe many are familiar, but just a reminder for attendees that if you are wishing to make public comment tonight, please, and you are online, please use the raise your hand on um, the corner of your screen. And if you're on the phone, star nine to raise your hand. And let's see, so far we have three that want to make public comment. And our first one is a screen name Amy, and next will be Raw War Paint. Can you go ahead, Amy?
Hi, thanks. Um, I am a resident uh, on Highland and um, just want to say how happy I am to see that sidewalk on Highland being included. It looked like maybe it was included in all the alternatives, but um, it's an incredibly busy little corner. And I was curious as to how far up the sidewalk would go. And it looked like it was going to be on the north side, but I wasn't certain of that. Um, and just how supportive I am of the whole project and I just can't wait for it to happen. Um, the number of near misses that we see is really scary. And the work that the school staff does to try to keep traffic flowing and keep everybody safe, they're like, just heroes out there every day. So um, I feel like they take a lot of risk and to, to really support the whole community. So I'm really thrilled that it's gonna happen, thank you.
Thank you. Um, next will be Raw War Paint, and then after that will be Maggie. Go ahead, please.
Hi, um, there's actually two of us here, um, so it'll be two comments, I'll go first. I live approximately three hundred feet south of Jacoby Creek Road on Old Arcata Road. I'm very happy with the roundabout project and optimistic it will alleviate some troublesome issues that occur on this section of Old Arcata Road. Just south of Jacoby Creek Road, Old Arcata Road has a blind curve before the road straightens out and the speed limit jumps from twenty-five miles per hour to forty-five miles per hour. Vehicles make the turn anticipating this increased speed limit and are more often than not already going forty-five miles per hour while still in a twenty-five mile per hour zone. This has led to countless near misses as I and my neighbors exit our driveways and vehicles and as pedestrians. We live in a twenty-five mile per hour zone, however, most vehicles are exceeding this speed as they drive by. I worry that when vehicles exit the new roundabout heading south, they will immediately increase their speed around the bend and consider themselves to be in a forty-five mile per hour zone. I worry this will lead to an increased risk of serious accidents and vehicle noise from vehicles revving up from five to ten miles per hour to forty-five miles per hour and beyond. I feel it is imperative for there to be a twenty-five mile per hour sign south of the roundabout for vehicles heading south in order for them to be aware that they are not yet in a forty-five mile per hour zone. I would also welcome a speed hump south of the roundabout so that vehicles are forced to remain within the speed limit until they are outside of the twenty-five mile per hour zone. This will also be helpful for vehicles heading north as they will be traveling forty-five miles per hour and approaching a blind curve where vehicles may be completely stopped as they wait to enter the roundabout. Also, I feel it is dangerous for the speed limit to jump twenty miles per hour from twenty-five to forty-five miles per hour. Many vehicles speed on this road and some see forty-five miles per hour as a sign to drive fifty-five miles per hour. I plead with you to help us make this stretch of road outside my house safer with the features I have suggested.
And I would just like to add, uh, my window overlooks the forty-five mile per hour speed sign. And I constantly, sitting at my desk here, hear the traffic speeding up before they take the corner. It's a constant source of noise. I've actually struggled to hear part of this meeting over our, the volume on our computer is turned all the way up, but the traffic noise is so loud that it's been difficult to hear. Um, and it's just, I don't know, it's really scary when we try and cross the road to be on the right side of the road for walking. It's scary to leave our driveway. I see our neighbors nearly get T-boned trying to pull out of their driveway constantly. And I just really struggle with the twenty mile per hour jump right in front of our homes. And that pretty much sums up. And yes, it's again, like, will the roundabout create more of an issue if that speed sign doesn't change or have some kind of improvement uh, for people to be more aware? Because they may, yeah, five miles to ten miles to forty-five is gonna make even more noise and be even more dangerous. And what happens when more vehicles are electric and we can't even hear them coming? So it's kind of a double-edged sword. The, the noise is awful as it is, but then once it's electric, are we going to risk getting T-boned even more? And that would be all, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next will be Maggie and after that Jude. Go ahead, Maggie. Uh, Maggie, I know you were having some problems earlier, we can't hear you. It looks like you need, there you go.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. Yeah, uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I live south of um, the proposed roundabout also. And what I see happening here is um, uh, trying to serve a multitude of issues with one little roundabout uh, that it's not going to be possible to address. Um, I have four main points and I'll try to zoom through them as quickly as possible. So we see uh, the Bayside as, as it's settled as a community. It's a string of pearls uh, all along Old Arcata Road, streets that come off of that are micro neighborhoods. Uh, from one end is the roundabout at South Bayside Indianola to the other end of Bayside at Buttermilk Roundabout. Um, and in the middle is the hub, our historic district. So the first issue is walkability. I've raised this many, many times and I feel like it's exciting uh, because I've walked it, I've bicycled it over more than forty years. Um, I really like what I hear happening in the part of Bayside that has been incorporated into the city of Arcata and in front of Jacoby Creek School. All along that stretch, I can clearly see that um, pedestrian safety is going to improve from the designs presented. Not so much with the roundabout. We know that roundabouts keep traffic moving non-stop smoothly through a neighborhood. They do not enhance the safety or improve the walkability for pedestrians. And we've discussed this, um, I mean, it's a broken record. That is one of uh, our organizations and, and my own personal main concerns as I age and I walk slower. Uh, I've watched people at all of the roundabouts, especially the one at Buttermilk, run like hell to get, get through there. So the walkability of just the roundabout does not enhance um, our community. Um, I want to refer, this is a second point, to a, a, a quite old document uh, for the city of Arcata, Physical Design Recommendations for Achieving Community Social Goals. Uh, this document was really helpful to me. It was prepared for the city by Sedway Cook, urban and environmental planners and designers. Um, in the nineties, when we were try, our goal, uh, Gainer and Associates was um, working with a number of organizations in the city to increase uh, participation in recycling. And we divided the city, using this document, we, we did everything by grassroots organizing, neighborhood by neighborhood. I would encourage you to look at this. This is a time when these kinds of social goals were a priority for community planning in Bayside uh, and in, in Arcata. So um, third, uh, once again, our organization contends that our goals for improving safety and our goal, historic hub, okay, am I up?
Maggie, thank you. It's been three minutes, but if you have anything else to submit in writing, I encourage you to do so.
Okay.
Next will be Jude and after that will be phone, phone and caller ending in seven four oh four. Go ahead, please Jude. Can you unmute? Okay. Okay, we will try again in a moment.
Okay, it worked. I'm sorry.
Great. Go ahead, please.
Okay. So my name is Jude Power, and I've lived for 28 years on Highland Street in the incorporated part of Bayside. So I elect council members, I pay taxes to Arcata. And I want to say that I really support the sidewalk extension on Highland Street because it would allow students at the school to safely walk to their parked cars when school lets out three times each day. The lack of safe passage for students and parents who are forced to walk in the lane of traffic, I think is a significant liability risk to the city. And I think that completing the already started sidewalk should be a priority. I also strongly encourage the council members to vote to construct a roundabout at the five-way junction of the post office and Jacoby Creek and Old Arcata Road. According to your documents, Caltrans evaluated this intersection in 2013 and found that its ability to accommodate traffic would be rated, quote, "very poor" within the next 20 years due to traffic congestion and reduced safety. This intersection poses a significant liability risk to the city of Arcata as a project lead agency. So you've been informed in writing by Caltrans and many citizens that this is a problematic intersection which needs to be made safe. In Caltrans' own words, quote, "Based on the Caltrans EIR, a roundabout is an essential long-term solution," close quotes. Also, I would like to say as a walker along Old Arcata Road who walks through Buttermilk, I must insist that roundabouts enhance the safety and walkability for pedestrians. I feel far, far safer crossing the Buttermilk Roundabout than I feel crossing the road at the post office at the Jacoby Creek intersection. That's a wild and crazy intersection is exceedingly unsafe for pedestrians. The roundabouts are feel a lot safer to me. So we just ask that the city council choose what is in the interest of public safety? I'm frustrated with the delays and further taxpayers' expenses of an EIR that's just going to be about historic buildings. I have been coming to these meetings since 2020, and I just want to see it happen. I want, I want this area to be safe. I want it to be brought up to current standards. And also, I'm very happy about the green swale. So thanks for continuing that. Okay, thanks for your work.
Thank you. Next is a phone caller with the last number 7404, and after that will be Chelsea. Go ahead, caller. Can, there you go. Go ahead, please.
All right, thank you. My name is Jim Zolick, and I live at 1766 Old Arcata Road. I've lived here for 23 years now. I'm a homeowner. I'm, that that location is three doors north or three doors toward Arcata from the Arcata, from the Bayside Post Office on the same side of the street, next door to the old post office, actually. And my home is where the old postmistress lived, Muriel Graham. So I'm, I'm calling in, I'm, I, I, I agree with many of the things I've heard. I thank the city staff and all the folks that have worked on this project for years now. I share the frustration that I heard from the last speaker about the delay. I would prefer this not to be delayed. I think the safety is a super big issue. Our kitchen faces the roadway. I watch kids walk to school. I watch people walking their dogs. I walk my dog. I ride my bike. I, you know, I walk to the post office. I walk to the cafe. There is a lot of pedestrian and bicycle traffic through Bayside. And currently, it is not safe at all. People come, you know, 45, 50, 55 miles per hour, even faster from, from Eureka, through the 45 mile an hour zone. They come around that sweeping bend that was designed to to create a, you know, quick flow of traffic. And they fly right, you know, I mean, if they don't make the turn properly, they're going to be in my bedroom, literally. And I know that happened, you know, up on Humboldt Hill to somebody who was killed in the middle of the night because some car went off the road and went through the bedroom. So I think the, I think the roundabout is, is absolutely necessary. I think it will fit in well with the other two roundabouts that are just further north on Old Arcata Road. I think people are becoming accustomed to how to drive through roundabouts. It's something that, you know, is a little bit hard for people to get used to, but they're getting better at it. And I realize there, you know, I heard some concerns for people that live south of us. You know, I I think the city's done a good job of addressing people's concerns. Maybe, it sounds like maybe there's a little bit more work to do, but I, I strongly encourage, you know, the council to approve this project when they get the chance to do that, both for the sidewalk and for the roundabout. I know some people are opposed to changing the rural nature of Bayside. People are always have a hard time with change. I have a hard time with change. The roadway is going to move closer to my front yard, the center of the roadway. I don't like that. I wish that wasn't going to happen. But I know that for the better, better, you know, the greater good for my neighborhood and everybody around here and for myself, that this project is a, is a, is a big net benefit. And so I'm willing to have the front of the, front of, you know, the, the middle of the road move toward my house. And I'm just hoping that that traffic will slow down. People, people go very fast through here, and it's really scary, and somebody's going to be seriously hurt. One of my neighbors was hit in the crosswalk at, 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 oh, okay, at golf course. So thank you very much for your time, and please support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chelsea, and then after that will be Emily. Go ahead, please, Chelsea.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chelsea, and I live on the south side of Old Arcata Road, just south of the proposed project area. I am super in favor of these sidewalks and really looking forward to being able to have running areas and areas to walk my nieces and nephews to school. And I'm super looking forward to this. I would also like to just advocate for putting speed humps or some sort of slowdown measure before, or on the south side of the project area before the slower zone. Cars do go incredibly fast in this area, and especially with a lot of small kids or runners or, you know, just people wanting to enjoy their neighborhood around here, propose, uh, pro, uh, poses a threat. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next is Emily, and at this time, we don't have anyone else raising their hand yet. Go ahead, please, Emily.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Emily, and I'm a resident of Arcata. My husband and I own a home just north of the area in consideration. I walk my dog on a daily basis along the side of Old Arcata Road that does not have a sidewalk. And I also have really good friends in the neighborhood that live right where the proposed project will extend to. We frequently try to limit the use of cars and choose to walk and bike to visit each other. My friends have small children. And while we enjoy the portion of Old Arcata Road that's north of Jacoby Creek School that has a safe sidewalk, we're forced to continue our journey on the side of the road without dealing with fast traffic. To say it feels unsafe is an understatement. Additionally, folks drive, you know, specifically to this area to bike and walk. Catering to visitors to Arcata and to this specific area of the community is a benefit for the entire city. The addition of a roundabout or other traffic calming measures, as well as a safe sidewalk, would enable families and those with pets to enjoy our beautiful community safely. So I strongly and respectfully encourage council to move this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Will, and no one is in line after that at this point. Go ahead, please, Will. We've got you on mute. There you go.
Then the mayor and council, uh, mayor panel, uh, standing up, it would be the proposed construction site from my house, which is just south of the proposed construction site. I have three.
Well, um, no, we can't.
I am a dead.
Excuse me.
Yep, that's sounding better so far. Try that.
Okay. Let's give this one more shot. I apologize for wasting your time. But I, I am, can you hear me now?
Yes.
We're good to go? Okay. Uh, uh,
Oh.
The proposed. Um.
There you, now you're, well, you
Are you hearing me now?
Yes, there you go. That sounds great.
Okay. Maybe we should work on some wifi out here too, but sorry about that, everybody. I just wanted to offer my support for this project. We live just south of the proposed construction site. I, me and my wife live right on Old Arcata Road. And as other commenters have said, we really are in support of reduced traffic speeds south of the proposed construction site area. I think that this project is really going to be a great asset to the community for walkability, for safety, and particularly for people with children who are attending the school. That I am one of those, those residents. We have three children in the ages of three, five, and seven. And our seven-year-old attends Jacoby Creek School. And we have friends that live right down the street. We have lots of neighbors that the kids play with. And there's children living in many houses around us, including my neighbors behind us with kids the exact same age. And so the, the walk to school, the walk to the little cafe there, it's, it's beautiful. It's great. We love it. But it is absolutely mortifying being along the road there. And particularly as we leave our house, where people come around that bend, see the 45 mile an hour speed limit, and it's like an invitation to just hit the gas as hard as you can. If there's any way, and I know this is a joint project with the county, that if the county can do something about that in coordination with this project and the city to put in the speed humps, as people have said, whatever needs to be done to reduce the speed of people entering this, this proposed project area and really make it even safer, I'm all for. If you look, if we're talking about the historic site here and the history of it, this was built as a freeway, pretty much. It is no longer in a completely rural area. It's surrounded by houses with children's school. People are using this to go down to the, the trailhead over by the Wildlife Center area. Lots of bikes, lots of people walking every day. That's what's so great about the area, frankly. And it will only be improved if we make it safer and make it more inviting for people to utilize it in that way. So I respectfully request that we advance this and do not delay. And we advance it as soon as possible. And I really am thankful for the work done by the council, by the, by staff. It's been a lengthy project. So my deepest thanks to City Engineer Cotry, Director Loya, and everyone who has put forth the effort to get it to where we are. Let's see it through to the end. Thank you so much for hearing me out.
Thank you, Will. All right, checking if there are any more public commenters for this item. Seeing no more public comment there.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, everyone, for taking the time to speak to us. I'm going to just do by roll call, see if there's any, you know, further comments or a motion from the council. So we'll start with Councilmember Schaefer.
Uh, no, no further questions or comments right now, but thank you to all the members of the public who commented. And it's, you know, I feel like I've been receiving a lot of negative comment about this project lately. So it's also really nice to hear, you know, positive comment and kind of see, you know, these people that are living there, how this is directly going to affect them. So just thank you to everybody that commented, and no further questions.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Goldstein.
Yeah, I also just want to say thank you so much. I really appreciate everybody. We had so many people call in tonight, and I appreciate every single person that called in. But I agree, I feel like I've heard a lot of opposition to this project. So it was really refreshing and nice to hear support for the project. I think that as an elected official, elected person, sometimes I feel like, you know, I have to put my own opinion aside because you all elected me and I have to listen to what you all are saying. So when I'm hearing negative, you know, again and again, I feel like that's the way I need to vote. And so it's really nice to hear support for this project too, because I personally, you know, after reading a lot this week, listening to a lot of presentations, talking with a lot of folks, I feel like it is really important. And I do support this project because I, I think it is important for the, the safety of that neighborhood. It's not the neighborhood that I live in in Arcata, so I didn't, you know, I don't want to say that I can speak from personal experience living over in that part of Arcata, but I really appreciate you all calling in to describe your safety concerns tonight. And I think there was one caller who said something along the lines of just basically that it's about the community. It's not about one individual. I think he said that, you know, it's going to encroach a little bit on his property, and that's not his favorite thing, but he sees that it's the best thing for the community. And I think that's really how I'm seeing this project at this moment, that I know that it's not everybody's favorite thing, that it's not going to be the thing that every single person wants in that neighborhood. And I wish we can make every single person happy with exactly what they wanted. But I think that the way I'm seeing it at this point is that it's what's best for everybody's safety, which is you know, my top concern right now. So I just really appreciate all the different perspectives. And to those that invited me out last weekend, I appreciate you taking the time to have me in your, in your neighborhood and walk me through the project from your eyes too. It really gave me valuable perspective as well. So yeah, I would, I would just echo that at this point, I think at some point we're going to move forward. So I don't see a reason to delay. It seems like we should just make this happen because the, the safety of the community is really important. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And then Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
I don't have any further questions, but I do want to reiterate what Councilmembers Goldstein and Schaefer did say about the public taking the time to reach out to us from both sides. And I know, you know, people in general are getting a little frustrated because this has taken a long time to accomplish. So thank you to both sides for continuing to come out and to, you know, to fight for the improvements that you want and to reach out to us. It really does help us in our decision making.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to just give a few comments. I think being the sole council member here tonight that's been involved in this over the past, you know, several years. I, I, I think the presentation tonight, I think, did a really great job of giving that high level overview of the incredible amount of community engagement that happened to get this project to where it is. And I think the public comment that we've received tonight, I think, is a reflection of, of that input. We, we, we have folks that, you know, have different opinions on it, things that they would like to see differently. But I think the, the broad and general support for this project is because of that years of outreach and developing and refining the process. And so those were some of the factors that played into our decision at the council that approved it, approved, approved alternative for at that time. So I, I think I'm wondering from, for staff, what you, maybe what you need from us is a direction on if we are going to continue the hearing to a certain date to do a town hall, or if we want to wait until there's a draft EIR and then do the public hearing there. Personally, I'm just going to say, I think it, it having the draft EIR be ready to go for people to give that input, I think, is a, is a better use of the community's time, given the level of engagement that we've done already over the years. I would rather them give input on something more concrete of like, here's the draft EIR versus doing a town hall before there's even that document for them to give input on, which we would then obviously want their input on. And I feel like we've got a lot of really robust input tonight and recently that we can incorporate into the process. So I don't know if there's a motion either way on that, but I, I, I think as a council, we need to give staff direction on, on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Prair for, for your guidance on that. Um, I, I will move that we, that we can, that we hold our public input meetings um, after we have completed the draft EIR.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion before we go to a vote? Okay, uh, so I'll call the vote by roll. Uh, council member Schaefer.
Aye.
Council member Goldstein.
Aye.
Council member Atkins Salazar.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion passes. Uh, thank you, everyone. And is there anything else from staff that you need from us? Okay. Okay, great. Perfect. And thank you again to, to everyone who, who participated in tonight's meeting and who, who written and, 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 and connected with all of us. Uh, more to come. And uh, next we have oral and written communications. Uh, this time is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on tonight's agenda. Please raise your hand if you are on the Zoom webinar or press star nine now. If you are on a phone line and you would like to make a public comment. Speakers are limited to two minutes. When it is your time for public comment, the clerk will unmute you and invite you to speak. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment?
Taking a moment to check if there's any public comments. We do not have any public comment at this time.
Okay, uh, then we will move to council on staff reports. Uh, are there any staff updates?
Uh, no staff updates tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council member Atkins Salazar.
Um, I, I do have one update. Um, so Vice Mayor Watson and myself, along with Director Loya, Chief Ahern, Sheriff Hansel and Arcata House Director Darlene Spore, were invited to attend a meeting regarding homelessness and the possibility of a homeless camp here in Arcata. And the general theme of that meeting was that the attendees really felt that we do need some type of um, low barrier to entry camping for, um, for homeless people. And this was the second meeting that the vice mayor and I have attended with concerned business owners and community members regarding, um, you know, their concerns about the homeless people. So my suggestion is that we put an agenda item on our next meeting so that we can start the discussion regarding this issue. Um, it's my understanding that our homelessness services working group has been working on this topic. So I think a good place to start would be to hear from that group um, and then see where we need to go from there and just get that discussion started.
Great, thank you. Um, let's go through uh, reports and then um, if there's any initial comments on that. Usually if there's a proposed agenda item, we kind of do a, we count the, what do we call it? It's not a straw poll, but it's like twinkles or something.
Twinkles.
We count twinkles in Arcata, not, not straw. So um, let's see, uh, council member Goldstein, any updates from you?
Uh, no, no update, thanks.
Okay, and council member Schaefer?
Uh, no updates, thank you.
Okay, um, the only update uh, I have for Humboldt Waste Management Authority, uh, we're still in the recruitment process for an executive director. So um, that, that continues to be uh, our focus. Um, and we did just a, uh, I think we, yeah, we finalized our, our budget. Um, so um, we have a balanced budget for the year, so that's very nice. Uh, okay, so in terms of the uh, proposed to, proposal to put uh, this item on a future agenda, possibly the next one, um, any opposition to that or twinkles of support? Okay, we're, oh, we can do like jazz hands, like jazz hands for, okay, perfect. Okay, great. So we'll um, work with the city manager to see, you know, if this next meeting or the one right after, you know, just in timing with the other agenda items, but let's, let's get it on definitely sooner than later. Um, obviously, there's a lot of interest in this. Um, and we'll go from there. So thank you um, for, for attending that meeting and for um, bringing this back to the council.
Thank you all as well.
Uh, okay, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.